You're welcome. Call the order of the Town of Batesburg-Leesville Regular Council Meeting February the 12th, 2018, at our beautiful Town Hall. Thank you, everyone, for coming. At this time, I'd like to introduce Pastor Lisa Eisenhower to do our invocation. Pastor Lisa? Yes, please.
That's good.
Let us pray. God of mercy, justice, and love, we give you thanks for this town. We give you thanks for our leaders. We pray that you will lead and guide tonight, that our conversations may be constructive and helpful for the betterment of our community. We give you thanks and praise for being with us. We ask that you would always lead, guide, and protect your people here in Batesburg-Leesville. Amen?
Amen.
And now, I'd like to introduce our service person who's going to lead us in the pledge tonight. It is Sergeant First Class Carl Chip Randolph Simmons III. That is one of the longest names. Thank you. Chip is a son of Linda DeMoch and Rainey Simmons and is a native of Batesburg-Leesville, is currently married to Fallon Simmons. Sergeant Simmons is a 1998 graduate of Batesburg-Leesville High School, currently studying business management at Limestone College. Sergeant Simmons enlisted in the South Carolina Army National Guard in 2001 as a heavy construction equipment operator for the 22nd Engineer and Company, CSE, in Saluda, South Carolina. He was mobilized in support of Operation Enduring Freedom in March of 2003. Deployed as a combat engineer in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom IV from August 2005 through October 2006. He completed 136 combat support and wing clients missions with the 104th Airborne Division Air Assault 14th Engineer Battalion. In 2007, he was hired as a recruiting and retention NCO at the National Guard. And in his rookie year, he finished 173% of his assigned mission with them. In 2010, he finished 100% of his assigned mission and also completed air assault school at Fort Benning, Georgia. In 2011, Sergeant Simmons completed U.S. Army Drill Sergeant School at Fort Jackson, South Carolina, and earned the Director's 54 Award for being the top recruiter in the state of South Carolina. And he now resides in Batesburg-Leesville. A little round of applause for Chip, please, for your service. Thank you for your service. Everyone, please stand for the pledge, if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. And a little applause for Pastor Lisa. She's the pastor of Faith and Empowerment, and I'm sure she's served honorably there. Probably, hopefully, not as much firefight in your service there.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Charles. All right. The next thing on the agenda, item number four, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Amen.
Sir, Mayor? Yes. We do have Gregory Sprouse here tonight, who, under the manager's report, was going to give an update on the bike and pedestrian feasibility grant study. Thank you. He did notify me after the agenda was finalized that he has somewhere else to be. So I don't know if it's possible to move him up to the mayor's report, but that would mean amending the agenda.
May I motion to amend the agenda?
We have a motion to amend the agenda by Charles. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Mitchell. All in favor? I'm going to go read down the roll. District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Five, yes.
Six?
Six, yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
Nine? Eight, sorry. And me. Nine, I vote yes.
I move that we move item A on the manager's report, Bike and Pedestrian Feasibility Grant Study by Gregory Sprouse from the Central Midlands Council of Government, up until the mayor's report under item V1I6. I have to do it that way. And item A, and move the others down accordingly, due to the fact that Mr. Sprouse has another commitment.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you, Charles, for the motion.
Second.
Second. And I'm going to read down real quick again, guys. District one?
Yes.
Two?
District two, yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And that passes. We'll move that to the mayor's report in the first slot. Thank you. Do I now need to approve the agenda as it is standing, or are we good to go? We're good to go, right? Wait, I do actually have to do this. So one more time, ladies and gentlemen. Am I good? Thank you. Okay, moving on to number five, adoption of the minutes. The A, regular council meeting for January 8th, 2018. Do I have a motion for the regular council meeting adoption of the minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Simpkins, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Holman. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. That passes. And next, let's have the adoption of minutes for the council work session.
Yes, Mayor. I thought we just moved the gentleman up to the next slot on your report.
We're still in the adoption of minutes. We're putting him in the first slot of the mayor's report.
And got me, yeah.
I know he's there. He's trying to push me along. Adoption of minutes, council work session, January 22nd, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Simpkins, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by DeMoch. And any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Minutes for the work session have been adopted. On to item number six, the mayor's report. We have moved the Bike and Pedestrian Feasibility Grant Study. Gregory Sprouse, if you would approach and go for it.
Thank you. I really appreciate you all accommodating me tonight and for having me here.
Good to have you.
I will do my best to make this brief, but I did want to take a second, just for those of you that are not familiar with our agency, to tell you who we are. It's Central Midlands Council of Governments. We're a regional planning agency that serves the four counties around Columbia, Richland, Lexington, Fairfield, and Newbury, and we work with all the jurisdictions within that study area on various regional planning activities that go beyond individual political jurisdictions and support our local governments. So some of the things that we do for our regular local government planning, as well as transportation planning, and even strategic planning. And so we've worked with Batesburg-Leesville on a number of projects over the years, most recently, the strategic plan. And one of the projects that actually came out of the strategic plan was to do a look at bike and pedestrian accessibility and mobility within the town. And that's actually something that we work on in our transportation planning program and have been working with communities throughout the four counties to look at those types of issues for a number of years. I've also been working with Eat Smart, Move More Lexington County Health Coalition that is also very interested in promoting active community environments, active living, healthy eating, and so that fits perfectly with bike and pedestrian planning. A couple of years ago, we got some small grant funds to work with jurisdictions within Lexington County to do walkability, bikeability assessments, and to look at planning activities related to bike and pedestrian activities. And so we had a specific grant to work with Batesburg-Leesville, Swansea, and Chapin, and we've been working to leverage those funds with federal funds to do much bigger planning study. And so that's where we're at now. We are working with our transportation planning director and the South Carolina Department of Transportation to hire a consultant team that will come in and work with those three communities to develop a bike and pedestrian plan. So we are, as far as the timeline goes, we've already released the RFP and are conducting, selecting a consultant right now. We hope to have a contract in place by the April-ish timeframe, and we think it'll be about an eight-month planning process. So by the end of the calendar year, we hope to bring to you a finished bike and pedestrian study. In terms of what we're actually going to do is we're going to look at the existing conditions in the community, try to inventory the existing bike and pedestrian facility, look at activity centers, origins and destinations, and like schools, community centers, how safe is it, who's using the current sidewalk network, that type of thing, and then have a public and stakeholder engagement process, where we'll have some public meetings, some focus group meetings with community leaders. And then that will ultimately lead to a plan with goals, policies, and recommendations. And what we hope to have is a priority project list that the town can then work with our agency and other partners to try to implement. And one of the things that we want to see come out of this is a catalyst project for each of those two communities that we'll actually explore in a little bit more depth. So hopefully, the consultant team that we select will be able to come in, and if there's a standout project that the community really supports, we can look at that in a little bit more detail and come out with some, you know, planning level cost estimates, funding sources, and roles and responsibilities for people to actually try to see some of these projects get implemented.
That's awesome. So that's my summary. Happy to take any questions. Does anyone have any questions? That's really fantastic. I know for us up here, we're pretty much perfect specimens, physical specimens, but our town manager has gained a little weight over the last few months, so this is really awesome that you're doing this. We're going to get him out there walking and, I mean, I hate to call him out like that, but you've got to do it. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Gregory.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That was item, move to item B. Our next regular council meeting is March the 12th, 2018. Mark your calendars. And now, I'd like to move on to council committee reports. The Central Midlands Councilman, Owen Gamble.
The Central Midlands Council has not met this month on the programs that they have offered. Last month, they met, and it was a direct relationship to the bus activity in and around the city of Columbia and coming up with different routes and methods of getting people from point A to point B. There is, there needs to be some type of movement on the finishing of Highway One. Had a chance to talk with several people about that, and they did mention to me that there was a program that was submitted several years ago that they're still waiting on an answer to. I asked them to redefine that and get it back to as soon as possible. If they, okay, if they haven't, I had to tell them again, then.
Owen, are you referring to the widening?
Yes, sir.
The last phase, Phase Two and Three?
Yes, sir. There is something like 16 right-ofaways that has not been signed. That's what the holdup is.
That's my understanding is for the public, with that expansion, my understanding that there were septic tanks that could not be moved, that had to be moved on some of the properties, and some of those, some of those that had to be moved, there actually is no place where that septic tank would perk, and those families, those people have to be actually relocated. So that's been the holdup. The last, Owen, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last timeline I heard, this will not begin, that will take the rest of 2018, that the construction guys and gals will get out there in the spring of 2019.
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else on?
No, sir.
Thank you. Environmental Planning Advisory Committee Councilman Jason Prowse.
EPAC did not meet this month, and we don't have our next regularly scheduled meeting until April.
April?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And Joint Municipal Water Sewer Commission, item three, Mayor Lancer Scholl. I did attend my first meeting on January the 10th and was sworn in. It was kind of an overwhelming introduction to everything that was happening at Joint Water and Sewer. Took my oath into office as new commissioner. They elected Stephen McDougal, the mayor of Lexington, as the chairman of the Joint Water and Sewer Commission. Again, this is over in Lexington. The general manager's report was kind of a, for the couple of new, three new people who are on the commission, and they told everything about the workings of the Joint Water and Sewer Commission and what they cover. It's pretty fascinating. Let's see, some policy discussion was over, they were talking about the dedicated fireline charges to schools. No decisions were brought on that. We did approve a $1 million supplemental budget appropriation for a Highway One tank and water pump station, and that was a $1 million budget appropriation. And then into executive session, two items for discussion inside of executive session over there was a discussion of a land acquisition for CIP and a discussion of redesign of their building over there, their actual office facilities. Some discussion there. And that was pretty much it. The next meeting is on February the 14th at 5:30, so please, everyone, send cards and wishes to my wife.
Did they discuss what the purpose of the water tank would be?
The Highway One Tank and Water Pump Station, the $1 million, I don't recall what the actual purpose of that was. I don't think it's a, I think it was an additional amount of replacement, I think.
Okay.
But I can, I'll follow up with that, councilman, and get more information.
Thank you.
Where was that being proposed?
It says Highway One, but I don't have the actual.
Yeah. Cox Fair.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other discussion or questions? All right. Let's see, Mr. Mike Taylor. Is Mike Taylor here? There he is, stepping in the back, Mike. For our item D now, on the list, BL Chamber of Commerce update, Mike Taylor, President of the BL Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks, sir. I wanted to check with town manager. I saw that in his report, he has something about the industrial parks, so I'll leave that out of my report from the.
Thank you.
We met on Thursday, February the 8th, in Midlands Technical College. We had a report from County Chairman Larry Brigham that reported that the county was having a problem of people outside of the county bringing trash to the recycling centers, also having contractors and stuff coming by. So they're looking at ways to alleviate that. It could be from, they're looking at everything, but possibly giving stickers to go on, two stickers per household to go on to the cars, which would be free. So they would acknowledge who's coming in and going out, or having someone at the gate to look at driver's license, but they're looking at various ways to alleviate that situation. He also announced that C-Fund projects have been approved by our area. They would be paving, it would be paving Brody Road from Cedar Street to South Brody Road, which is a mile.
Yay.
Yeah, and they need it.
Excellent. That's great news.
Cedar Street from South Lee Street to Brody Road, which is .16 miles. Holman Street from Mitchell Street to North Carolina Avenue, which is .31 miles. And Lexington Street from Peachtree Street to Fulmer Street, .16 miles. And Fair Street from West Columbia Avenue to Liberty Street, which is .42 miles. I'll leave out the, Mike Keith was there, but that would be in your manager's report. I repeated that I had attended the meeting.
Excuse me, Mike. Mike? Did you let the mic down a little?
Okay, I'm sorry. That better, he was a little taller than I am, that's why.
Who is it?
Well, I went to a Blue Cross Blue Shield meeting, and it was about five hours long, but what I wanted to share with them, and I won't, I'm sorry, don't have time, but was a legislative report.
Take your time.
And also a, yeah, and also the economy of South Carolina, and basically far South Carolina, with a lot going on that we have going on right now, as far as rates and things like that. So that was very interesting. I shared that with them. As far as our committees under the chamber, Arts on the Ridge, we have our summer theatrical training coming up, which we did last year, and I think it's, I may be wrong on this, but it's in July. I think it's like the 23rd through the 27th right now with a play on that Friday evening. Our youth group, Dream Catchers, is extremely strong right now. They have about 45 people, I mean, youth involved in that, and going to the Job Fair and Rotary, they came up, and it was just really rewarding, talked to them about that group. One thing that, if I may, Pastor Lisa, they are not a part of our chamber, but the meeting chamber, and I'm fresh enough to be at the meetings, what the Minister of Arts does in our community, and I want to, and pray that they will have their Easter community service on the 30th of March, and it will be at Leesville United Methodist Church, beginning 11 o'clock. It's for people that, during the lunch pake or whatever, they can come in, they're free to walk in and leave whenever they feel necessary. That's my report, sir. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share it with you.
Thank you, Mike Taylor. Appreciate it. And send our thank yous to Larry Brigham for the advocacy he's doing in the county for getting those roads done. That's awesome. Moving on to item number seven, public comment regarding items under the agenda. Do we have any? No public items? Items number eight, and?
Public.
You said public.
Public?
People in the audience.
Right. And they, right. They've got to fill out something.
Do they know that? Did you advise them that they had to fill out something before they could speak?
To get on the agenda, right? Teddy, could you address it just real quick? Yeah. Let's just, how that's done for Ms. Mitchell, please.
You can speak on items that are on the agenda for that night, and under the policies, rules and procedures of the town, they must sign up 10 minutes, within 10 minutes before it started in the meeting.
So did they know that? Did the public know this?
Yes. Has there been that policy for a long time?
Is there anyone, is there anyone here that might have missed that and would like to speak tonight? I'd be glad to have you come up.
Mayor, maybe we can have the attorney reporting as they relay the information from this meeting to make that a point, so that citizens know that they are able to speak.
Yeah. I agree. I think it's a great point, and thanks for reading up shortly, and perhaps we can have a sign here somewhere that says where people can sign up so they can talk. That'd be great. We can do that. Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Mitchell, appreciate it. Unfinished business, we have none in item eight. Let's keep marching along. Item nine, let's see, new business. We've moved our item A was above, so we're looking at item V1. No, we moved item A under the. Oh, not that part yet. I'm sorry. See, this one, I need to get the next, I need to get the 150s and the 125s. I apologize. I got it.
The same one, you know what you're talking about, too. I'm talking about that we know the number.
You guys got my back. That's what I need.
That's it.
New business, item A, don't mean to run over the annual March for Meals Month. All right. Proclamation proclaiming March 20 as a 16th annual March for Meals Month. Let's see, I want Cal to come up, is that right? And Teddy, should I read this from here so we can hear it and then present it, or do you want me to come on up and?
I think you.
You can read it from there, so everybody can hear it and then come up for picture.
Very good. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs both congregate and home-delivered and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas the 2018 observance of March for Meals celebrates 16 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs both congregate and home-delivered in Lexington County have served our communities admirably for more than 38 years. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Lexington County are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also care and concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Lexington County provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the Lexington County, South Carolina, that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Lexington County provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels program in Lexington County deserves recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. Now, therefore, I, Lancer Scholl, as Mayor of Batesburg-Leesville, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 2018 as a 16th annual March for Meals Month, and urge every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National 2018 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. New business, item B, approval of funds and selection of contractor for CDBG-funded sewer lift station repairs. Oh, wait a minute, I've got to, I've got to accept that proclamation, correct? Yes. Yes, I have to do that. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the march as the 16th annual March for Meals Month.
Second.
I have Owen and Charles. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, a proclamation passes. Thank you so much, Cal, again. Moving on to item B, approval of funds and selection of contractor for CDBG-funded sewer lift station repairs.
That's for the sewer, for the repair they've been doing every year, $80,000. But why is it costing them?
You want a motion before we get briefed?
Yeah, let's, let me take a motion, and then we'll, do I have a motion to approval of the funds and selection of contractor for CDBG-funded sewer lift station repairs?
So, move.
Thank you. Simpkins and Gamble, on a second. Now, let's open up for some discussion.
No, I, I need to name who you're going to approve it to, and that wasn't said at all of this.
Oh, thank you.
Look at the end of the white page, the white paper on this item. I think it's got all that information.
You bet.
Who is the white?
Talking about the contractor that's going to be awarded to? Triple A Utilities is the name.
It's the white paper.
Triple A Utility and Construction.
Oh, that was the item. He just sent it today.
Sent what?
Yeah.
What? We're getting this stack of papers that I have here, Teddy.
White paper.
What was it?
It was in the council packet emailed Friday.
Huh?
The council packet emailed Friday.
Did you write the page right after?
This page.
Oh.
Yours is in there.
The memo? One minute.
Memorandum, white paper.
So, unless he's, um, the dates for the, out of there.
What's the name of the, all I need is the name of the company, right?
Yep, Triple-A Utility and Construction.
All right, so let me try this again.
The packet, it was emailed Friday.
That's it. That's it, yeah. Different memorandum?
Stay tuned, Tim.
Okay.
Tim, okay.
Let's, let's get the motion right.
Uh, Charles, if you would, make the motion again. Uh, approval of funds, sorry, approval of funds and selection of contractor for CDBG-funded sewer lift station repairs by Summit Engineering.
Triple-A Utility and Construction.
Utility and Instruction LLC.
I'll read it for the record, I'm here.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we, uh, award the CBD, CDBG Sewer Lift Station Improvement Contract to Triple-A Utility and Construction LLC as the lowest bidder, and approve the town's grant match of forty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents. Second? Second.
Say, my Olin?
Uh-huh.
Um, now, any discussion or, any explanation? Tim, please?
Well, you know, we took bids, and we had several bidders, and the low bid was, we had an eighteen thousand dollars, that's for four pump stations, which includes some electrical, some, some control panels, and some other ancillary work. Um, the original, um, grant was for four hundred and three thousand ninety-five bucks. As you see, the bids came in less than that. I have proposed a question to CDBG, and I'm waiting on an answer, of whether or not we can spend the rest of this grant money. And if we spend the rest of the grant money, the town is required a ten percent match, which would be the forty thousand...
Three hundred and nine...
Yeah, four hundred and nine dollars and fifty cent. That would be our ten percent match for the entire grant. But as it stands there with a low bidder, twenty-one eighteen thousand dollars, we won't be utilizing all the grant, and our ten percent match for that money would be thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. It's a little confusing, but I have not heard back from CDBG about whether or not we can expend the rest of the money.
So that won't be included in the motion tonight?
No. Well, I, what I've sort of asked, uh, council to do is to, you know, to provide the forty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and fifty cent, in case they do come back and tell us we can spend that money. If they don't, we'll just spend whatever the contractor's bid is.
It's not gonna be more than that amount, correct?
Oh, no, it's not gonna be any more than thirty-one thousand, eight hundred. It's not gonna be any more than thirty thousand, three hundred and five fifty cent. That's correct.
And that would be ten percent of the, of the top number right now, okay.
Well, your plans for the funds are extra.
Well, we're gonna have to use it on the four pump stations that we actually put in, and we actually submitted a bid originally, I think I estimate it was somewhere a little over a half, half million bucks. When they came back in, they only provided partial funding during the last cycle, so we reduced our scope a little bit, so there's some, some definitions in there. We actually reduced our communications, uh, method for these pump stations. We're gonna use a dial-up cellular type system, which is less expensive, but with this extra money, we may go with a sustainable radio frequency type system, so we don't have to pay for monthly charges.
So you'd upgrade the current contract agreement that you have with...
Yeah, with the, with the four pump stations that are listed. It would have to be the four pump stations that are listed in, in the application.
So is this gonna correct the problem that you've had for the past years, where you've spent like eighty thousand for fifteen-plus years? Is this gonna correct that problem?
This, this will help with some of the maintenance on some of the pump stations, but this doesn't have anything to do with our aeration basins and stuff at our, at our sewer plant. This is just for the Bodie Street Pump Station, this will be the Berwick Offway Pump Station, the North Lees Pump Station, and the North Plant Pump Stations. This is just the start.
Look, Tim, since we have not heard from, uh, C, um, CDBG for the additional, use of the additional funds, why don't we just approve what the contract states tonight, and you come back if they, uh...
Yeah, that's fine.
If they say that we can spend the additional funds.
That's fine. And I did contact, uh, if you noticed, if you looked at the bids, the contractor left about seventy-five thousand bucks on the table. I was a little concerned about his bid, but our engineer contacted him and asked him if he was comfortable doing the work, as we have it specified, for that three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and he said he was. And...
It's, it's, uh, on that note, I mean, the, the high bid was six hundred thousand, uh, six hundred forty-seven thousand. What's the big difference between, you know, six hundred forty-seven and three eighteen? And even the next lowest bid is three eighty-four.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes, you know, I mean, I don't like to be flying on an airplane for the cheapest person I can find.
But, but actually, I called the tailor at Lexington, he just got through, some pump station work for him, and they highly recommended him, and said that he's actually entertaining another job for them.
Yeah, but how can you, that's...
Sometimes it depends on how bad they need work. If you've got a contractor that's got a lot of jobs pending, he may go high, 'cause he wants to show interest in the project, but he may realize he's spitting himself out of it, 'cause he doesn't have time.
That's true. Yep. And he followed our bid procurement process, and he's a low bidder, and he's qualified. He has qualifications, and he came highly recommended, so...
Jason?
Yes.
Does the construction council mean anything? Sewer lift station?
Having, uh, having been involved in this lot of work, I've seen, uh, bid ranges that vary even more widely than this, and it, and like the other gentleman said, it, it does have a lot to do with, uh, current, uh, workload for individual contractors, and, um, you know, their desired level of interest, and also their, their available subcontractors. Um, those, those subcontractor numbers have a big impact on the, on the total cost of the project, so...
Was Lexington the only municipality we got, um, feedback on in terms of their quality?
I knew personally that I could call and ask, and when I talked to David Patton, David said, David said this contractor went over and above, and actually did things, he's actually pretty conscientious about what he does, so, he highly recommended him.
Any more discussion?
Call for the vote.
So, I'm gonna restate this motion as best I can. Charles did a great job leading it. Uh, this is, um, the bottom motion, right? Okay, got it. Uh, I make a motion that we, uh, this is, I'm calling for the vote for making the motion that we award the CDBG Sewer Lift Station Improvement Contract to Triple-A Utility and Construction LLC as the lowest bidder, and approve the town's grant match of forty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents.
Didn't we agree to approve the three hundred and nineteen hundred thousand and match at thirty-one thousand, eight hundred?
We only have to approve the, our ten percent, the maximum of our ten percent in the meat for the budget, I think, right?
The bid amount.
The bid amount.
The bid amount.
If you want to amend the motion...
Yeah.
To the lower number, but this is the, this is the motion that I'm giving right now, forty thousand. If you want to amend your motion to the thirty-one...
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. You can amend it.
Charles had recommended that. What was that amount?
Thirty-one thousand, eight hundred. Let's, yeah, let's go ahead and amend it down. Let's always get it...
May I amend my original motion to, um, bring it in, um, in line with the, uh, the bid that has been approved, uh, which the amount would change to thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars at this time?
Thank you, I have a motion, and do I have a...
Olin would...
Olin, second?
I accept, you accept it.
Do you accept the amendment? Thank you. Any last discussion, again? We're good to go for a vote? Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote. Uh, district one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four? District four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
I don't really approve, but okay, yes.
Thank you, Julie. Um, district six?
District six votes yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes. Thank you, motion passes, thank you.
Mayor, if we move on, can I, let me just, uh, say, looking at this, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred is the, um, the matching amount.
Is the match, yes, sir.
But the, I thought we were approving the amount that we are awarding the lowest, the lowest bidder.
The thirty-one thousand, eight hundred is based on the actual bid that came in. What we were asking for initially was, if they may come back and approve us to spend the extra money between the bid and what we were awarded...
I, I got it.
And based on the actual awarding of the grant, we were asking for the grant match to go up to that amount, so if they award it, we can do some extra work that, that we had not intended to do.
I think Charles is saying, thinking for the award, so of the eighteen thousand and the...
This was for the award amount, right?
That make, that includes the match. Of that award, that three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars...
That includes the match, right? It's three hundred and eighteen thousand.
The motion awarded the contract to Triple-A Utility, and approve the town's matching portion.
Correct. When you approve it, you automatically get the match.
Yeah.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Everybody good?
No, so my, my question was, the approval was for the three hundred and eighteen thousand, for the, uh, for the, uh, contract?
That was the contract.
Right. Which includes the, uh, the, the, the thirty-one thousand, eight hundred is in addition to that?
Well, no, we're, yeah, no. The three hundred and eighteen, you're accepting their bid, the lowest bid, and selecting them as the contractor, and then you are in conjunction agreeing to the thirty-one thousand, eight hundred, which will be the town's matching portion of the grant.
Gotcha, I guess. Gotcha.
All right.
I guess. I'm good.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, thank you, thank you, audience, for your patience. Uh, moving on to new business item C, approval of funds and selection of contractor for RIA Grant-Funded Ridgeall Street Water Tank Remediation.
Again, there was a white paper submitted, I think, in, in the packet.
Right.
And, uh, there was a low bidder, we took bids on that seven weeks ago as well, and there was a total of five bids, and they raised from a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Of those, Leary Construction from Indiana was a low bidder at one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Again, we did our research on them, they have necessary qualifications, and came recommended by the engineer for us to award this project, and this is a rural infrastructure grant, which requires a twenty-five percent match from the town. So, what I'm asking for, a twenty-five percent match would be thirty thousand and eighty-seven dollars for the town's participation with this grant for the Ridgeall Street tank painting for one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty bucks. The low bid was one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, but we have a twenty-five percent participation match on this grant, not ten percent, and that twenty-five percent was thirty thousand and eighty-seven dollars.
So that's what the town would come up with?
Yes, ma'am.
The thirty thousand is what the town would come up with?
Right.
The rest is provided by grant funds from Rural Infrastructure Authority.
Good.
Teddy, where is that money laid right now?
Um, before we go too far, let's, let's, let's make a motion, gang, and then we'll, uh, we'll get into some discussion.
I make a motion that we award Ridgeall Street Elevated Water Tank Remediation Contract to Leary Construction Company Incorporated as the lowest bidder, and approve the town's grant match of thirty thousand, eighty-seven dollars.
A motion by Harmon, and we have a second?
Second. Second.
By Mr. Mitchell. And now, let's, let's open up for discussion.
So, the question was, where are the funds available for this? In the, in the Utilities Capital Improvement Fund reserve account, we have an unencumbered balance of five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and three hundred and sixty-eight cent in there, that we can use those funds from there.
All right, uh, go ahead and call for the vote. Some more discussion, district one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to, this will be item D, all right, first we amend the employee policy and procedure mainly relating to, and to holidays.
So moved.
Um, I have a motion by Charles, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, found a vote. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the, the holidays, uh, passes, perfect. Moving on to E, discussion regarding request by Council McCain for a possible new basketball court at Twin City Park. Um, Council McCain?
Um...
Any discussion?
Well, I, I'm, reading the motion.
Um, we would, uh, we would put this down for discussion, just a discussion, to bring everybody up to speed on, on the request, and you would ask that I put this on, and you had talked with others who agree.
All right, so do you need, do you need council's permission to, uh, to fund that?
Yes.
Okay, so then we need a motion.
Yes, if we got a, a program, you need a motion.
Okay, so this, this is, um, um, a project to, um, to bring some movement to young kids and folks with type-two diabetes in our community. Um, you know, basketball is a pretty inexpensive sport. A lot of kids, um, uh, enjoy basketball, and also we were doing a walk track, so that folks who are not as in shape as I am, um, we are, we are, they could, you know, we, we wanna promote, along with the bike, the bicycling, we wanna promote, um, a healthy community here in Batesburg-Leesville. And, uh, Twin City Park is a, is a good place to start, where the kids can get out and, and play ball, and, uh, the adults can get out and, and walk and, um, try to, uh, live a healthy lifestyle. So what I asked for was fourteen grand, thirteen grand, to, um, to, uh, to install the basketball court. Randy Gibson at, um, Lexington Parks and Recreation will, uh, donate the, the painting of the, of the slab, and, um, we're at Lexington Medical Center, also wanting to participate in that project as it progresses. Anybody, anybody have any questions about that?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I am one hundred percent behind Mr. King's idea.
Stop right there.
However, who owns the property?
Uh, Twin City Alumni Owns Property. We did address that, though. Um, I spoke with Reverend Gibbs, and he is willing to do, um, a ninety-nine-year lease to the town for that slab, for, I know what you're getting at, you're getting at insurance and liability. Um, personally, I, I think a waiver for the town would work, but I'm told that the waiver is only as good as the paper is written on. So, they would be willing to, uh, to do a long-term lease to the, to the town for one dollar for ninety-nine years, and the town would, would have, be responsible for that slab, of course.
Second question. Who will be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of that field?
Well, the community will be, but I've also spoke with, uh, with Randy about that also, because from time to time, you're gonna have to do some upgrades to the surface and, and, and paint, and he's, we really don't have a park like that in, in Batesburg, and, uh, the county recognizes that. And, um, so he's willing to, to work on it, but the Alumni Association and other, uh, groups in the community will, uh, police that, that community.
Next question is, uh...
I liked it when you was at the beginning.
Oh, I'm all, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Um, who will control the loud noise, the cussing, the drinking, the, uh, extracurricular activity?
Stay down, I'm controlling it. I haven't seen you control it yet, but, um, I, I think... One thing that we did when we looked at this project was to talk to the neighbors. I'm a neighbor, and we talked to Ricky Long and Freddie Johnson, and the kids that will be primarily using that, and that's just a rule, you can't, we're not going to put lights out there, so when it gets dark, it's time to go home. And we'll make sure that we police it, and I think they understand where I'm coming from, the folks in the community and the young people that we've spoke to, and if it becomes a problem, you know what to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there anyone here representing the Alumni Association, the owners of the property?
No, I talked to Gibbs today, and, I mean, once, if we agree to do that, then they always have an opportunity to come back and say, "Can you hear from the Alumni Association?"
Yes, I am, ma'am.
Okay, but if there's an issue with it, you know, some of that me, Teddy, and Gibbs can sit down and talk about, but like I said, when I spoke to him in his vice chair, they didn't have a problem with it.
As I said before, I'm one hundred percent for it, as long as certain things are under control, and we've got a sign down there that says, "Owner's Jurisdiction of the B.O. Police Department."
I'm sure that we have those signs readily available throughout that neighborhood.
And she will enforce the whatever he needs to enforce.
Mr. Mayor?
Jerk.
Just as a point of order.
Point of order, thank you.
I think what probably needs to happen is, is council take a vote to direct me to enter into the lease, to craft a lease, negotiate a lease with Alumni Association, because we know exactly where this is going to be on their piece of property, so that we know what's going to be under the town jurisdiction, and then we can move forward with building the court. But I think the first thing that's got to happen is, we've got to obtain the lease before we can move forward with anything else.
That sounds prudent to me, I mean...
I agree.
Because I mean, Council McKean, I'm not for it, too, and I'm not for it, and us getting to several, I would love to see several spots like this around town, absolutely, but...
But I want to get, I want to get while the getting is good.
Don't worry, that's not going to change, let's make sure we go about this in the correct order so that, you know, we don't mess it up.
Do we need to make a motion that we, can we do it all together? So, if it's, I move that we direct our attorney to negotiate a contract with Twin City Alumni Association, and if terms are agreed to, I move that we appropriate the thirteen thousand dollars to move forward on that project.
I second.
Right, that would be part of what I would want to know from council, where do y'all want to take the thirteen thousand? In the budget, in the budget that we have for this year, where's that thirteen thousand? What are y'all open to taking those funds from?
How do we know?
I thought you were, I thought we had already discussed that.
I'm just saying, no, council, not giving me to identify the thirteen thousand.
What did y'all discuss?
Yeah, I never heard of the manager ask that question.
Council is not giving...
When you're town manager, you controls the money, so I'm asking you to speak, talk about taking the funds.
The motions are he does whatever is necessary to appropriate that fund, okay?
That's the way the motion's made.
Okay.
Question is, if we take thirteen thousand dollars with the current budget and we cannot appropriate, and we already don't have a contract in place, if we can't have a contract in place until the first of the year, we do have a new budget year coming up, we can always budget for thirteen thousand dollars for the 2018 budget year plan, so we actually have a plan in place prior to making a, and, no offense, Steve, to you, but we have to make sure we plan accordingly so no other department is having a deficit and being fiscally responsible at this point in juncture.
If I know Ted, if I know I definitely need to weigh in, that money, thirteen thousand dollars is no money, and Ted, are you, I'm fairly sure that you can find that money without too much of a problem and without burden.
He's not sweating sweating.
No, because we've already talked about it, so...
Let me make sure.
Anyway, the motion is on there, and I think we got a second, Mayor.
Call for the book.
Call, okay, let me get the motion right, and then repeat the, will you repeat the motion?
Okay.
I'm sorry, let's get this right for Ms. Judy, please.
Okay, so the motion is that we direct the town attorney to draft a contract with Twin City Alumni Association for that specific court, piece of property, and that we also direct the town manager to find and appropriate thirteen thousand dollars for this project.
Pending approval of the lease.
Pending approval of the lease and agreement with Twin City.
Okay, do you understand the motion?
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Mr. Mitchell, second. We need more discussion.
I'm all for this project. I don't want to be wrong, but I just don't, I want to know where the funds are coming from before we agree with thirteen thousand dollars being removed from a budget item that we currently have, already funded for, because there's a budget made for a purpose. That's my biggest thing, is I want to know where the money's coming from, or then I'm going to find the money. That's not a good enough answer for me. We'll find it, if that's awesome that we can find money, but I want to know where it's coming from, before we get a refund.
They already discussed this, they know where, I mean, Ted know where the money's coming from.
But we don't know that, so we're not involved in this discussion.
Ted should be the one to tell us where the money's coming from.
Right, right.
Understand, wait, so how can I approve something I don't know where the funding's coming from?
Okay. Yeah, one second.
If council approves the budget, we got a lot of new people that have gone through the budget.
Yes.
When council approves the budget, you approve where every dollar goes within a department, okay? Every dollar that comes into the town is already appropriated, it goes somewhere, it's already being spent somewhere. So, essentially, by going forward with this, what's happening is, is you're handing the manager complete authority to take that thirteen thousand dollars from anywhere he sees fit.
That's it.
Anywhere he sees fit. Y'all are in control of the budget, he's in control of the daily operation. He can't move stuff in the budget unless you give him authority.
That's what we just said.
You can give him authority to take that money from fire department, from the police department, from wherever he want to take it.
But council, you acting like he hadn't done this before.
He can't do that, he can't do that.
Okay.
He can't take money in the budget and put it wherever he wants to. Y'all appropriate where the money goes, and he spends it where you tell him to spend it.
Right.
I'm not saying you can't do it, you just did, but what everybody needs to understand is exactly what you're saying, by this vote, you will be saying, fine thirteen thousand dollars, and you can take it from wherever you want for this project.
Right.
Find it, that's what you want to do.
Yeah, but he...
No, council, there is a possibility he cannot find the funds, and he would come back to council and say, "We don't, the funds are not available."
It's not what this motion is doing, yeah.
You use that term, "find."
Listen, when we were talking about building a...
Let's not go too far off.
Okay, but when we were talking about doing a substation in Leesville, there was no big whoop about whether we had the money, and Ted said, "I would identify the money."
I hear you, let's stay on the topic, I'm with you, Steve.
Okay, so also, maybe the most...
Is there...
Obviously, it's pending that we...
Do you want to ask the manager if he has anything on the top of his mind where this money would come from?
Yeah, he'll be fine.
There is thirty-four, around thirty-four thousand dollars in the town savings account that the money can be taken from there. With this, set aside, not...
Zero, it's back to any department's operating budget.
Now, do you need to amend your motion?
Right.
Now, how much do we actually have in our full savings account before we start taking from our savings account and deple, our savings account for the town?
There is a town savings account that has about thirty-four thousand dollars in it. There is a general fund checking account, now that account, at this moment right now, I believe is nine hundred and something thousand dollars, it'd get up, it'll get up to about one point six, and then at its lowest point this year, we were around seven hundred and something thousand dollars in that, but that's the operating account.
Those funds out.
The operations that we set the budget for.
That's the, yes.
So, the only, say, other than the day operations fund that we have, which is called the general fund, the only extra amount we have is twenty-four thousand, whereas...
Not, not, not necessarily, there's thirty-four thousand in the savings account, but like I said, the lowest point the general fund got to this year was around seven hundred and something thousand dollars. You can essentially say that that is extra from the fund balance, per se.
Could you explain the purpose of that fund, the thirty-four thousand, the little savings?
The way that used to be used is, at the end of a budget year, if, let's say, the fire department didn't spend fifteen thousand dollars in a capital account or something like that, and they wanted to earmark that money to just set aside for the fire department to use for the next budget year or something like that, they would transfer it over and earmark it within that fund. The funds that are in there now are not earmarked, so...
Okay.
That's what they used to do, just transfer funds. I believe one year there was some training money left over, and they earmarked some additional funds for National League of Cities.
And what happens to that, too, because it's been in the new budget, the new fiscal year, does it, does it...
It just sits there within the earmarks that have been put on it, but like I said, right now, the thirty-four thousand that's in there has no earmarks on those funds.
But it doesn't carry over to the next budget cycle?
No. And it's not part of the...
It's not, it does not carry, I think that's my question, does it carry over to the next budget cycle, and the answer is no, that thirty-four thousand does not carry over to the next budget cycle.
It just disappears.
Okay, that was my question. So, we need to get this motion correct, I think.
One more question.
Yeah, yeah.
If we got, if we did approve this motion as it stands right now, what is the actual construction date that you guys are looking for? Because we don't have a contract with the association yet, and therefore, we're sitting on quite a few times to get the bids out there to actually build this, or have already been bids already taken for this basketball court?
I think, I mean, it's really, this is a question of point of the slab, but I think that we probably could get that done in the next thirty days, at least, and I will, I mean, once we, once we get the contract, I can't see me, once we get the contract, and this is something that me and Ted have been talking about for a while, so there are some things in place, and once we get that lease agreement, we can also do, within thirty, forty-five days, we can have a bid go out and back in. And like I said, we're not, I mean, we're not talking about a whole bunch of money.
Thirteen thousand's a lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, but we spend, we spend money, it's for the kids, and...
And I understand, and I'm just wondering what the push is and why not add to the next budget year, which we're coming up to actually...
Well, I mean, that money, that money will be, the money that you're talking about, the thirty-four thousand, will be absorbed into the budget, it's not...
And I understand, I understand completely.
It's not anything in particular, but I certainly would appreciate it if we would make that thirteen thousand dollar investment in the, in the community, something for the kids, and I think we'll make sure that we do it decently and in order, and that the investment will be well spent and well received, and I'm sure that our counselor and Ted are not going to let us do anything that's crazy with it, we'll get it done within thirty days or so.
I think Councilman Holman has a good point. I think we should put the legal ramifications in place first and then move forward from there, because if we approve fund, town funds for community projects, we're going to be bombarded with several organizations coming to get funds.
But you always, they always have that, I would rather have the money set aside. If we don't, if we don't come up with a contract and contractors within thirty days, then the money just goes back to wherever it was. So, that would be my suggestion, is that we at least be given an opportunity to fulfill that.
I feel pretty, I mean, I feel pretty confident, Steve, that everyone wants to do this.
Yeah.
But I think, but a hundred percent of us are on board with, let's work out this lease, maybe let's put together a white paper of some sort or whatever, a little more detail and work on, get with Lexington, this is not going to go away, I promise you, let's put the money part on the work session if we want, and whether we can move ahead quickly, it would be, you know, a quick vote, work the numbers up so everyone can see a little more, something in front of them, they could help out a little bit, but I think you have, I think you have the support of everyone here.
Will the construction of the court be bid at?
It would have to be.
It would have to be, that's our, that's our only, that's our only thing.
I mean, now, you're talking about, get the contract, and then you have to stop, you wait for thirty days to get back to council to be able to vote on it, and then you send out the other bids, I mean...
Well, it's a government turn so slow, don't they?
Well, something, well, some things that we can, some things we can get, we can get through.
Again, Council McKean, I think that everyone is in favor of doing it.
I was drawing my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, that's time.
So, if you can withdraw your second, I think we can move on to the next item.
Well, I think we could, I think we still could, I would like to have this lease, I would like to look towards the lease.
Ask them if we should vote again and then start the process of everything else, because you got to vote again.
Where do we vote in? Where do we vote in, because I'm totally confused now.
To direct him to negotiate a lease with them, and have him give us some time, everybody some time to absorb.
All right.
So, withdraw motion here. With, oh, okay. Shirley, go ahead and withdraw your second, please, really, just for the books. You're smiling at me like you're sitting...
Like I want to tell you something. I withdraw.
Thank you, and then, let's get another motion on that directs...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we direct our town manager and town attorney to draft the lease agreement with the Twin City Alumni Association with the goal of constructing the basketball pavilion at Maple Street site.
Second.
So, Steve, the motion is second by everyone. I think we've discussed this enough, thank you, everyone, I'm going to call for the vote, if that's okay? All right, District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes, yes, yes.
Four?
District four, yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, thank you, it passes. Continuing on, let's see, on to, back just in time to the manager report, item ten, the new item A is B, the industrial park update from our manager, Teddy Lekadu. Do you want to go one by one, calling them out, or do you just fill my little order in, please?
Okay. As far as the industrial park, update on that is that Lateshaw County is currently in the process of getting our park certified through the South Carolina Department of Commerce. They've contracted with W.K. Dixon to assist in this process, we are working with W.K. Dixon on our end to provide them with the water and wastewater information that they need as a part of the certification. All this information is due to the South Carolina Department of Commerce by February twenty-first, Lateshaw County Economic Development is handling all the rest of that. Economic Development Director Mike Eads has stated that this is important and certainly makes the park more attractive to potential industries that are looking at the park. They are also moving forward with some clearing and thinning of trees on site, which will make the park a little more tractable, and they are looking to grade one or two of the parcels out to already have that process done, which makes it more appealing to industries as well. Landscaping and signage is in its final phase and will be bid out soon to begin installation on that, and there is one manufacturer that is interested in our park, it's down to us and a park in Georgia. I know Lateshaw County is doing all that they can to try and sell the deal with this manufacturer, if you ask me who, I cannot tell you because I do not know myself.
How many jobs?
I believe, I know it was, I know it's a fifty million dollar investment, I don't know the exact number of jobs, but one of two sites.
One, two, three, four, one, one.
No, I...
Not necessarily, because fish are taking...
We have plenty of space out there, so we'll take them.
No, I'm just saying, I wonder how many jobs they're going to create.
Yeah. Anything else on industrial park? Anything else on industrial, okay, let's move on to item C, the SEDOT sidewalk grant update.
Okay, as a reminder, this is for the installation of new sidewalks on Highway twenty-three from North Lee Street to Walmart, and then Highway one from Livingston Place to South Lee Street, and that's going to be to replace the broken, broken existing sidewalk and to lay a patch of sidewalk that is currently missing through that stretch. It is a two-phase project, phase one being Highway one, phase two being the Highway twenty-three portion. We've recently spoken with SEDOT and SCANA officials about the possibility of going ahead and installing conduit underneath the sidewalk while this process is going on, to have that in place and to go ahead and stub out for potential future decorative lamp posts through this stretch, so to go ahead and run off the poles conduit under the sidewalk and have it stubbed out for those posts in the future whenever we want to put those in. Spoke with the right-of-way agent, and there are six property owners on Highway one that have to be contacted about right-of-way, they have actually signed the right-of-way agreements with four of the six property owners, and the other two have given a verbal commitment.
I suggest you send them a fruit basket. Let's get some sidewalks.
Sure, but the other two have verbally committed, so hopefully, they will be signing very soon. Once the Highway one portion is done, they can go out to bid, and once they bid, let the job, once that is fifty percent, they can begin with phase two construction of of the sidewalk, but once the right-of-way agent finishes up with the, with the remaining two property owners on Highway one, he's going to go ahead and begin the right-of-way acquisition process for Highway twenty-three.
To how many, how many properties are affected by that?
On Highway twenty-three, I think eleven off the top of my head, I'm not sure I can get the answer though, and, and let you know, I don't know a hundred percent off the top of my head, but I'm, it's around that number.
So all you have to get is their approval, you don't, you don't have to pay them anything or anything?
As a part of the right-of-way process, their DOT does offer, don't ask me their calculation because I can't tell you, I don't know, but they have a formula that they put in based on the amount of property they need for the sidewalk, and they'll offer them that, so, but once the right-of-ways are obtained and the, they're fifty percent done with the Highway one portion, they can begin the process of phase two, Highway twenty-three.
Ted, when is the next grant cycle?
For.
Sidewalks?
Tap grant, SEDOT.
Yep.
Tap grants, once we are over fifty percent of phase two, we'll be eligible to apply again, but until the others can't apply.
When, when that is?
It will be, should be the middle of next year.
It would, their, their project will start phase one construction, followed a winter twenty-eighteen, and then spring of twenty-nineteen, phase two, that's the projected time.
The challenge of these projects is that we're, we don't control the project, DOT does, so that's the challenge.
But there was another, was, was there a block grant that comes down to the COG for sidewalks also, CDBG money for sidewalks?
Well, we are, Laxton County is an entitlement community, meaning that we apply to Laxton County, Laxton County administers CDBG within Laxton County.
The Laxton County Council?
Right.
And not the, not the COG?
Not the COG.
Not the COG.
It goes from the COG to Laxton County.
Okay, right, and when will this cycle be, again, for, when is the next opportunity for us to do a new sidewalk project?
CDBG is currently, we are currently in the process of that with the super lift stations right now, I believe the next cycle that we'll be eligible for, for CDBG will be latter part of this year, we will begin the application process.
Okay, and have you been in touch with the White House on the new infrastructure?
I have not.
Okay, we want you to definitely get on that.
We definitely want you to definitely contact the president. Item D, upcoming council work session on February the twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen.
If you haven't marked your calendars, mark your calendars, February twenty-sixth, council work session here, six o'clock PM, this will be a work session dedicated to the water project, Zell engineers will be present that night as well for the council discussion regarding that.
Bring yours in, Alex.
And, no, okay, thank you, and on to E, electronic recycling event, I believe this will serve as a reminder, Saturday, March seventeenth, nine o'clock until one PM at the Batesboro Leesville High School parking lot is the electronic recycling event, it's open to all Laxton County residents, you can dispose of electronics, computers, printers, TVs, microwaves, cell phones, rechargeable batteries, stereo equipment, and much more. There is a limit of eight electronic items per household, you can also have up to five boxes or bags per household of paper that you need shredded at this event, as well, we will collect tires, small car and truck tires, rearview ATV bicycle tires, but we will not take big, large tractor tires.
Would you say where and when?
It's at the Batesboro Leesville High School, the big student parking lot and football stadium parking lot.
What time?
Nine o'clock until one o'clock.
It's going to be in the Twin City?
That will be in the Twin City, yes, sir, and just to provide, highlight our sponsors, Advanced Disposal is providing the tire collection for that day, the bins that they go in and they're taking care of the cost for the disposal of those tires that day, the town, we have always in the past provided the paper shredding, and Laxton County provides the e-waste for that.
Here's a question, is the street department going to pick up tires that are discarded now and take them there so they can be disposed of?
We, throughout the year, have a number of tires, and I don't know if Miss Hall is here tonight, but Miss Hall is pretty good about creating a pile at our shopping, creating a nice pile, and what we do is we take that pile from there, out there and dispose of them.
Because there's some, there's some tires around, and if we get somebody to, to grab them at the.
I would, I would say this, if you guys notice tires around, definitely let me know, we'll, we'll get out there and get them.
Okay, perfect.
On to F, town egg hunt event, Thursday, March twenty-ninth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM at the Leesville College Park is the annual egg hunt, the tandoors, we have incorporated a new component into this event, one thing we've heard in the past is that food will be a good part of this, so we have reached out to a number of food trucks, everybody that we had a business license with the town, we reached out to them as well, as we've reached out to food trucks from the Lexington and Columbia areas, inviting them to, to come that night and set up food trucks, and that way people don't have to go to New Ancho, San Jose's, or Sheely's, or wherever, after they leave there, maybe they can come and take advantage.
Food trucks are happy about that.
Take advantage of food trucks that night and, and get some dinner rather there, we have gotten some commitments at this point, but what we are asking is the food trucks that come, provide us the menus in advance with the pricing on it, that way we can let the public know so that they are prepared to bring whatever funds they need, and they come with an idea of what type of food will be available that night.
What time is this?
Five-thirty to seven-thirty PM.
Okay, and Easter Bunny will be there?
Easter Bunny will be there, as well as Kool-Aid and popcorn for the kids.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much, moving on to, yeah, another question.
It's my understanding that Broadhead Road and Cedar Street are due to be paved.
As part of Mike Taylor's report from the county council, that's, that is great, because he has the actual, he's got more information on that, Charles, if you'd like to talk to Mike, yeah, he's got a little more details on that, yeah, that's a great thing from the county. Moving on to item eleven, executive session, A, discussion of contractual matters relating to indigent defense contract, B, discussion of contractual matters relating to town judge contract, and C, discussion of legal matters relating to Sluta County encroachment permit and appeal, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moving to executive session, motion by Simkins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Holman, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we are now in executive session.
Second by Councilman McCain, I heard that one first.
It wasn't, it was.
Oh, sorry, I can't hear. District one? I am Councilman McCain, thank you. I believe, got it right before.
That's good.
District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, we are back in the regular session, there are no action items coming from, and no action items coming from executive session, and moving on to item thirteen, potential agenda items for next month's meeting, March twelfth, twenty-eighteen, do we have anything at this time?
Yes, the lease agreement from the, from the, from the park, and also the funding source from the park.
Yeah, well, okay, got it, noted, maybe we can get it done beforehand even, any others? All right, moving on to item fourteen, adjournment, do I have a motion?
Motion.